We call the January 8th meeting of the Bucksport Planning Board to order. Roll call.
Steve Endisha.
Here.
Ryan McDonald.
Yeah.
David Brand.
Present.
Steve White.
Here.
Here.
Bruce Hansen is walking in the door.
Jay Grouse.
Here.
Review and acceptance of minutes for the December 18th, 2018 meeting.
Who will they be accepted if drafted?
Any discussion? All in favor? You second that?
Yep.
Dave. I abstain. Chair report, there is none. Code enforcement officers report.
I just have a couple of things to update you on. As you recall, at a meeting a few, a couple of months ago, you reviewed and approved the Christmas tree farm on River Road with the condition that the owner get a permit from, entrance permit from DOT for the second entrance he installed and that, that he, that the entrances be reviewed by the police chief and public works director and satisfied that was far as safety concerned. Do you recall those conditions?
Hmm.
So the police chief and the public works director did go out and they were satisfied with the two entrances, but the DOT inspector was not. He actually told the owner that he could only have one entrance. Because of the way the road's classified, only one DOT entrance is allowed per lot.
Okay.
So he's been asked to remove the new entrance that he created. And he's also been asked to lower a mound. There's a raised mound between the two entrances that does have an impact on your ability to see clearly down the road. So as part of the DOT permit, he has to lower that mound two feet and grade it back into the existing terrain.
Hmm.
And he's also expected to actually widen the entrance of the existing driveway to make it easier to turn in and out. So those are the conditions of the DOT permit.
Wow.
That must, the raised area must be where the sign is.
Yes.
Pretty much.
It did, yeah. Hopefully it's not ledge.
It didn't.
Really?
No, no, it didn't by there.
Blasphemy.
They don't see any trees that are really blocking it.
Yeah, well, he also, the inspector also asked them to cut some trees down at the, at the northerly end of the lot.
Yeah.
They thought impacted side distance as well. And the second thing I'll update you on is the church occupancy of the fitness center. There was a representative of the church in my office today to give me an update and they're, he's telling me that they're getting very close to closing on the property. And as you may recall, that was a condition of your approval of that change that before a certificate of occupancy can be issued, then they have to present a deed. So he's confident that's going to be happening in the very near future.
I'd like to speak on that.
Hold on, wait until he's finished, please. Then we have the limited public forum.
That's all I have for you.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the limited public forum, which is a chance for the public to address the planning board or matters related to land use of planning in the town of Bucksport, but not on the agenda tonight. But you can come on up for that.
David Keane, Chairman of the Town Council. I'd like to speak on the, on the fact that, you know, why the church wasn't required to come and go through the same zoning change as the main maritime's going to have to, Mr. Gordon down the street is going to have to, Mr. Hawes out on Silver Lake Road had to. I guess the term was that it's one non, it was a non-conforming use being replaced by another non-conforming use. I don't believe that's accurate with some of the information you were given. It being a recreation facility, in your town code, under definitions, a recreation facility is open to the public or to membership. And that isn't true in the case of that building. That building was a negotiated contract settlement between the union and the paper company to provide a fitness and health center for the employees and also to rehab their employees that got hurt on the job. When AIM bought the property, they assumed all rights and privileges, but also obligations and obligations of landfill maintenance, dam maintenance, and lake level controls, and also the obligation to meet the contract. The contract is still in effect. There's still mill workers there in the power plant. That facility is still open to retirees and their spouses. I'm a retiree, I have a card. Also to mill works that are laid off, can still use that facility. So it is actually a function of the mill. And I don't have a prob, don't get me wrong, I'm not against the church, but I felt if they came and went through the zoning change, they would have more flexibility with the building. You can't replace one non-conforming use with a more non-conforming use. So if they were going to break that up to generate revenue by, say, opening up a daycare center in there, or a drug rehab facility, or even rent office space out, that would be more non-conforming than the original non-conforming use, which I don't believe is non-conforming use to begin with, as explained in your, in the definitions in the town code. And there'll be major alter, altercations to that building. Not only that, they're buying the old credit union up and back. And that, that's, that's not non-conforming, that's an industrial zone. It was an HR office and also held the mainframe computer for the mill. So they, they wouldn't be able to turn that into a daycare center or anything because that is even non-conforming. It's, it conforms to what industrial use is. So I would hope that you would reconsider. I don't believe the permit's been issued yet. They can still go through what they want to go through, but you have, I, I think you need to ask what they're going to do with that facility. Because if it's more non-conforming than the previous non-conforming, which I don't believe should have been ruled non-conforming, then that isn't, isn't legal by the town code. So I hope you reconsider. And I think the church was willing to do that, but it was presented to them, oh, this is an easier way for you doing it. Quick and clean, but it isn't quick and clean. Because they, they may have come back and, and say, what, they, they may spend all this money buying the place and not be able to do what they want with it. And if they go through a zoning change or contract zoning, they would have the right to do that. Because they'd explain what they were going to be doing with it. So hopefully, I hope you reconsider. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I, I guess a couple. One of your comments was is a, a drug rehab or treatment center at that facility?
I heard that as a possibility.
I have heard that, okay? You hear stuff, okay? Ninety-nine percent of it isn't correct, but you hear stuff. And I had also heard that, and I, that was never brought up in any presentation that I'm aware of.
No.
For that building.
I believe the recreational center, they just, they plan on using that as their church.
Correct.
And storage, I thought, in the credit union building. I thought they said storage.
I thought storage for that old building.
We didn't see much.
Much discussion.
However, a lot of what he has explained to us does really change what the heck we were presented with as far as the mill union and the membership is still able to use this.
Wouldn't that come up in?
That should have come up.
As they're trying to close on the property, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be found out by like a title search or something? Wouldn't the, wouldn't the lawyers find that? If there's a, if there's a union agreement that's still in force, that that building is supposed to be whatever, wouldn't that be found in?
I don't know.
I would think so. If there's a covenant or there's some sort of a.
It brings up some interesting questions.
Yeah.
With one good lawyer.
I mean, we can only deal with the information that we're given. So Jeff, do you have any comment?
I would suggest, if you want to, if you think this is, you need to further discuss to set it, be put on the, the agenda for the next meeting.
With the people from the church or just amongst ourselves?
Well, it would be the union, AIM, or the church. They're all three of them.
I, I'll try to collect some more detailed information to bring back to you at the next meeting.
Well, if they've got a proposal for what they want to do with that, with that land and that property specifically, then like Mr. Keane says, you go through the same process that everybody else has had to go through recently.
I thought that was, we asked that during the meeting and they were pretty plain that that it was just going to be for services and, and other things they, they've done in their church.
I believe the issue, though, was the non-conforming use, though, is how that got bypassed.
Well, whether it's, whose, whose judgment is it to determine if a use is non-conforming or not? Is it solely your judgment or?
Was it a determination I made with, with legal guidance? So as I said, if you want to take, take more time to delve into that, I would suggest we do it at the next meeting when it goes on the agenda.
All right, okay. Anyone else have anything to say? Any comments you'd like to make?
I just, one more comment. Jeff said he had legal counsel. I, I've spoken to legal counsel too, other legal counsel, and they don't figure that it shouldn't have been classified as a recreational facility because of the obligation to the union contract and the retirees. And right according to your town code, recreation facility is described as for public use and membership. That doesn't apply in either case here.
Okay.
So I, I don't have any, just, just make the church go through the same guidelines that you're making everybody else go through. That's all I'm saying.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the limited public forum. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, a request to review a proposed subdivision restrictive covenant amendment.
You had in your packet a copy of the proposed agreement that is intended to be signed by all the owners of lots in the so-called Seekonk subdivision. And the agreement is intended to allow one of the lots to be developed with a dwelling that contains a home-based business. Right now, the, there's a covenant in the deed that prohibits that, or any lot to be used with any type of commercial use. And the subdivision plan actually contains a condition of approval by the planning board at the time, this is back in 1977, that says lots are single-family use only, residential use only. The, this agreement is on the agenda to start the discussion about whether or not the planning board actually needs to get involved in this at all. And I actually got some legal advice about that. And I was a little surprised at the advice I got, but the, the attorney who responded to my inquiry said that she believes that our, the way our land use ordinance defines one-family dwelling, that occupancy can include a home-based business and still be called a one-family dwelling. Because of that, the attorney believes that there's no need for the subdivision plan to be amended to recognize the use of one of the lots for a dwelling with a home-based business in it. So my suggestion is that you follow the attorney's advice and not require a proposed amended subdivision plan to be submitted for your review. That it simply be dealt with the agreement amongst the property owners, which is a separate process that doesn't involve the town at all.
Let's see, this is written up for all seven to sign.
Yes. But I was thinking for a while that they might also have to prepare an amended subdivision plan, like you, we've had a few in the past where they wanted to do something that the condition on the plan said you couldn't do. And so they prepared an amended plan, brought it to you for your review, and you approved it, signed it, and went to the registry of these for recording. But like I said, I don't think it's necessary in this case because of the way our land use ordinance defines one-family dwelling.
But under the appendix K changes, you've got something in there that allows a professional to be at home without a permit. So I mean, and some other restrictions that used to be residential are now expanded to basically include this language if they want.
Yeah.
So I find, find it relatively moot, but, I mean, this, this could be answered yes and no for an approval.
So do we take a vote to not get involved or?
Do you want to get some input from the folks who are here to?
Yeah, or does it like to come up and speak?
I'm Sue Ann Craig and I'm, my husband and I are the property owners. And Jody Aragona is, and Craig Browning are the people who are trying to buy the property. And we have tried to do everything right. And I went right to Jeff right away and tried to find out what it was we needed to do. And Jody got an attorney right away who wrote all of that up. And, and I also have an attorney who's my brother, so that was lucky, I didn't have to pay him. But, you know, we've gone back and forth so that we're making sure that we do everything correctly. And, and this has taken quite a bit of time to determine what would be the best way to do it. And in that agreement, I went, in our purchase and sale agreement, I went to all of the other butters and, and asked them, would they be comfortable with this and show them the language? And then when they agreed, they all said yes, that they were. And one, one family is now in Florida, I had to call them. And then, then her attorney wrote it up so that they could have it and see it, and then they have to go down to Bill Tomasco's office and sign that, the, the original. And once we have all of the signatures of the original, we'll send it to the, the people in Florida and then they will FedEx it back to us. So it's been, it's been a process and unfortunately, a lot of it's taken place over the holidays. We just have a couple more people to get down there and have them sign it. And they've been working during their working hours, so we've got to work that out. But we don't, we don't have any problem with anything. We're all in agreement. I appreciate you taking the time to even listen to the story, but Jeff has taken time, he's been on vacation and talked with me about this so that we could make sure that we did everything correctly. So, and it's not really like it's a business, it's a jewelry studio, she just wants to be able to make the jewelry in her home.
That's, it's in the home, not in the outbuilding?
It's in the home, no, it's in the home. And she'll be making the jewelry in her home.
Because that is a stipulation in our ordinance that?
Yeah.
In the village district, if you want to have a home-based business, it needs to be in the dwelling.
Yes, and that, and that's what Jody wants to do also.
It was described, sorry, should I come up?
Sure, please.
It was described to me by my lawyer when I saw the first covenant of residential use only, that because I've been making a living as a jewelry designer for 30 years, that meant that I can't even like beat a necklace in my spare bedroom. So I was like, well, what about people who have like online businesses? He's like, nope. So I was like, so if I wanted to open like an eBay store, I couldn't do that in that subdivision? He's like, nope. So that's why we had to go through this.
So you're not going to have people coming to your house, like a shop in the house with things for sale, are they?
Occasionally they will. I do craft shows and people are always asking, where's your studio? And they want a private showing, but it's usually a couple of ladies.
So not like, I mean, like regular store hours in your kitchen?
Oh, God, no.
With cars in and out of there all day?
No.
Is that, that just got adjusted for the permit process for that, for that type of home-based business, correct? Where she's, where she's not going to have day-to-day traffic and accepting deliveries?
That was for, and we'll talk about that later, that's for a home-based office, business office.
Okay.
So this is different. This is actually, you've got produced jewelry, right?
Yes, I make it myself.
So that, that would be a home-based production activity. And then if you have on-premise sales, that's a home-based mercantile occupancy.
Yeah.
So maybe sort of a combination of the two. The home-based mercantile does have limitations, but it includes things like craft items and jewelry, I think would be allowed there too. But as I said, the biggest limitation is that it needs to take place in the dwelling, not in an outbuilding. Can I have your name, please?
Jody Aragona.
Is that with a Y or IE?
It's an IE. And it's A-R-A-G-O-N-A.
I got it right.
And everybody that's in the subdivision is okay with that?
Yes. We're kind of surprised, I think, that you came and asked. One person said as long as they didn't put a Dollar General in there, they truly didn't care.
Well, it's so much online stuff today. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's crazy to think you can't do that in your own property, in your own house.
You have your own online business, have no inventory and write any rate ID?
Just email it out.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say anything?
So I, just to make this formal, I suggest you make a motion that the Seekonk subdivision does not need to be amended to allow home-based businesses?
Same.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. So now we'll move to administrative business. First is the second reading of proposed changes to appendix K.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to go through and just give a brief summary of what these are?
Please. I'm very excited.
So the second reading is essentially just a repeat of the first reading with a couple of minor changes that you asked for after the first reading. And again, it's broken down into four parts. The first part will address resource protection zone changes, and the second part will address land use changes in the ID and IDO district. And part three will address some language you're adding to deal with accessibility in buildings, properties. And the last part will address some miscellaneous land use items and minor map changes. So the, the definition of resource protection shoreline overlay is, is being reorganized. You see a big deletion of items there, but essentially it's just been reorganized to be consistent with the way it's laid out in the DEP shoreline guidelines. And we're keeping the additional inclusion of what constitutes resource protection in 71121. And this is the areas that surround Silver Lake. The town would like to keep that in RP because it's the town's public water supply. That's in the ordinance now. And then it goes on to talk about other properties that do not need to be in RP. Which we went through in detail before. And this, this map here identifies the areas we're talking about taking out of RP. Now I did, I sent out notices, by the way, to all the property owners who own property that is impacted by these areas. And I did get two, two responses. And would you like me to do this now or wait till the public hearing, share, share the responses I got?
I agree. We have a wait and a share it now, so. Anybody else? Let's, let's wait.
We'll wait. So there, there are 11 areas, including one that's on the Duck Cobra that is impacting property that is kind of split in two zones. One is the resource protection and the other zone is the limited resource protection. In one of those, you can have a dwelling, in the other one, you can't. So the proposal is to make it all limited resource protection overlay districts so that the property can be developed with another dwelling if they want to do that. That's number 11 on this map. I won't go through these individually unless you'd like me to.
We've done it enough times, yeah.
So we'll, we'll go back to these when we talk in the public hearing about some of the feedback I've been getting.
Did we ever get any notice about any tax status on that as far as what people were paying for taxes? Did that ever give anyone any tax breaks or?
It didn't have.
I, I didn't, I didn't look into that.
Okay.
And my taxes didn't change at all when I had 100, 100 acres or so put in resource protection.
So we don't have anybody objecting on a financial basis there?
I don't believe so, but we'll wait in here.
So the second section deals with, excuse me, uses that this board believes should be allowed in the ID and IDO district. And the first group deals with assembly land uses. And the proposal is to allow auction houses, meeting facilities, indoor recreational facilities as allowed assembly uses in those districts. The next table deals with education land uses, and this one has a few more significant changes. It's taking post-secondary education facilities, private schools, and public schools, and combining those all in just to one label, which is simply called schools. And that's a definition change too, which I'll get to in a, in a few minutes to talk about. So the proposal is to allow research facilities as well as schools. And in this case, we have a footnote, and the footnote is C1. And that footnote says that the land use is limited to schools that offer training and education to meet licensing or certification prerequisites, schools that offer specialized training, and schools that offer post-secondary education. This table also considers school administrative offices as an allowable use, and there's a separate footnote for that one. And that footnote says, the land use is limited to administrative offices for schools allowed in the district. The next table deals with housing land uses, and there's just one, and that would be dormitories. It's considered an allowed use in the industry, industry overlay district. And then municipal land uses. We have, I made a note here, but after the first reading on December 18th, 2018, table 959 is further. eighteen, Table nine, five, nine is further amended to identify public information centers as a compatible use in the ID and IDO district. So that was right here. So that's been changed to an L2 use. And we changed public recreation, which is already allowed in the IDO, we changed it to also allow it in the ID district. And that's it for changes in that table. Professional land uses, this, the proposal is to allow business offices in those districts that are not allowed right now. Second workland uses, there's one change here, which is boat launching facilities already allowed in IDO but not ID. The rationale behind allow it in IDs because a boat launching facility might actually require more land area than the two hundred fifty feet of the width of the shoreline zone. So it makes sense to make it an allowed use in both, on both sides of the shoreline zone. Trade land use is already allowed our off-site service businesses. So the proposal is to allow onsite service businesses as well. And you see the L2s here. And then we get into the definitions section to change, to eliminate definitions for public school and post-secondary education facilities and modify this definition to simply call it a school. And the definition reads a publicly or privately funded facility providing educational opportunities. And then examples are given. Any questions on that one? Next, Part Three is some proposed accessibility amendments. And the first change affects decks and porches, stairs and ramps. The proposal is to in all the, in all the districts, I didn't put the district headings on here, but the ones, the ones where the A-12 note is, is a limitation on decks and stairs that are located in a shoreline zone. If they're below a certain size, you don't need a permit, but the thinking is that it just, it makes sense just to require a permit across the board in the shoreline zone. And then the other note, the A-10, deals with the installation of stairs and ramps elsewhere. And this note clarifies that the only time you need a permit to install stairs and ramps outside shoreline zoning is if they're for public use. And that's where the ADA standards kick in.
And then that's what that group was here for a couple of months ago.
Yes, yeah, the senior citizens.
Yeah.
And then Section Twelve, Public Safety Standards is amended to add review of accessibility. Twelve, twenty-nine, one is the review that you would conduct for a site plan that had parking lots that needed to have accessible spaces and things of that nature. You'd be reviewing that. Twelve, two, twelve, twenty-nine, two is the review that would take place inside the building, and that's the review that would be conducted by the code officer. And then twelve, twenty-nine, three simply says that if you need more information than what you're given to make certain that compliance is being met, then you can ask for that. That's repeated throughout the entire session on standards. You can ask for more information if you don't have enough to do review. Part Four deals with a couple of minor things, the home-based professions. We talked about it a little earlier. This, this change will exempt a home-based profession business from a permit, provided that the business is conducted with, where customers do not come to the business location and products are not shipped from the business location. This is a type of business where essentially the, the business owner is sitting in front of a computer and doing work with their customers over the internet and things of that nature, where they're essentially invisible from the outside of the building because there's no commercial activity. And let's see, the table on production land uses is amended to add a type of manufacturing facility called small sawmill facilities. These are allowed in the C2, C3, ID and IDO, Route Fifteen Residential Commercial and the R1 and R2 districts with a footnote J8 that says small sawmill facilities are subject to compliance with Section Twelve, Eighteen Noise. And that's an existing standard in Section Twelve. And then we have a definition that clarifies what that means. And this one here has generated a lot of discussion for, after the first reading on December eighteenth, the board asked that this proposed change be tabled until the budding lot owners on Bayview Avenue were notified about the proposed change. So I sent out notices to forty-eight property owners, and I didn't care for a few. I didn't get any concerns from any of them. They, they just were curious about what this was all about, and I explained to them why we're looking at this possible change. And one, one owner commented that they probably would rather see residential development behind their property than commercial. And it's, it's a C2 district, which is a commercial district. But as I pointed out at the last meeting, this might be viewed as an example of spot zoning because the change really only benefits the owner of that property.
But the existing use of that property is a residence.
Yeah.
So I don't find there's any change to the use of that property. From residence, we'll add another residence, there ain't no change there. I don't care if it is C2.
Well, the, as you recall, they, they came to the board at the last meeting and asked for a change to allow the outbuilding to be converted from a non-conforming accessory use to a non-conforming principal use, which is another one-family dwelling. And you granted that, that change. But to add another dwelling, which I think they have plans in the future to do, it's not possible because, unless you do contract zoning, because it's not an allowed use in the C2 district. It used to be, before two thousand ten, residential uses were allowed in, at the time it was called the Route One Commercial District. Essentially the same area that the C2 is, is laid out now, used to allow residential development, one-family, two-family. Multifamily is, is allowed now, and was back then as well. But I think the, the ordinance committee and the, and the town council at the time felt that the one and two families should be prohibited to emphasize commercial growth along that stretch of Route One rather than residential. We haven't seen any. Well, there's been some, but, but not much. So that's why the suggestion was, let's just deal with this one lot and say residential's okay there. Then the issue of spot zoning came up, so that left you kind of wondering what, what course to take. There might be some people here to talk about this tonight, so I suggest, I'm, I'm done with my presentation, if you want to open the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the proposed changes to Appendix K. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say? Come on up.
I'm Don White, I live on the Town Farm Road and got a, got a notice from you guys from the town about the proposed change from resource protection to limited residential. What, what's the stimulus for this? What, what's the, what's the reason? Where does it come from? Why, why, why the change now?
I think a lot of, if I may ask, a lot of the problem came when property was taken because of the, was it the bird or?
Moderate to high-value wading bird and waterfall habitat. That was the...
So a lot of people had their property just put back into RP. I know because I...
That happened to you.
Yeah. And it, it, it's, it's not fair. Most of my property had never been really in RP. So that's one of the reasons.
Those, I'm sorry, those, those areas that were shown on the larger map, the ten areas that were highlighted on that map were the areas that we were told by DEP had to be in RP.
Had to be.
So we went through that process in two thousand nine. And then in two thousand twelve, DEP issued a memorandum to every town in Maine. And the memorandum said essentially, you really don't need to keep the properties in RP if you don't want to. You can leave them in RP, but you can also go through the process to take them out if you want to. So that's what we're doing now. And there was a question, by the way, this is a good time to talk about this. The question was raised, well, what took so long? I wasn't prepared for that question, but it's, it's a good question to ask because, you know, there's two thousand nine and two thousand twelve, well, wait, or two thousand nineteen now, why did it take all that time to initiate this change? And I went back and looked at the record and was reminded why that happened. In two thousand thirteen, I actually started the process of doing this, but this board was not prepared to deal with it. Instead, what you wanted to do was wait until the comprehensive plan was completed. And that was, that was in the process at, during that time. The plan started, but then came to an abrupt halt when we're going through a change of managers. And then when it picked up again, that didn't complete it until two thousand seventeen. So that is why this board didn't do anything after we received that number until now because they, they wanted to wait till the comprehensive plan was done.
So what does the comprehensive plan say now about the, about the resource protection areas that are, does it make any blanket statements?
You have a written with it, Steve?
I have.
No, but I look.
All right.
Go for it.
Okay.
Do you have an easy way, Jeff?
Do you have a digital version you can search, search on there? I don't have my iPad.
You can keep going, I'll...
Okay, I just, just...
This might be a while.
So, so you have, it's, this planning board has the jurisdiction then to make a change or not to make a change, is that correct, what you're being?
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, but you can accept. The town council will do this, thank you. What kind of development becomes available if you chose to go and change, make that change?
If I remember correctly, that, what's the, the, the boundary, is it, did the boundary remain the same, it just became more restrictive within that boundary?
Yeah, there was nothing to change in the shoreline district, it's just that it was given a new name. It went from limited residential to resource protection.
And there was more, there were several more restrictions, you couldn't, you know, we're not, by doing this, we're not saying you have to build houses in, along the River Avia Brook. I mean, if people want to protect it, by all means, I mean, I...
Right.
I had, it was like a sixty-acre wetland area that I owned at the time. And I found that, I, I came to that meeting because I was, it seemed, it seemed like I owned the land, but I couldn't do anything that I bought it for. And it was very restrictive on cutting wood and there was no, you couldn't put a cabin in there or anything. I think if I still owned that property, I'd be happy to have it taken out of RP because it gives control back to the landowner in some instances.
Gives you more options on what to do with your land.
Right. It's still limited. It is limited. Due to it, it is still protected. It is still a protected...
But you could put dwellings and stuff like that.
There you go. To a point.
To a point.
But it's less restricted.
And I think this question was raised earlier, would there be any change in tax status for the landowner?
I don't recall getting a tax break.
No.
That was a question I raised at the time because that's a large piece of property that pay taxes on. It didn't change one bit for me, so.
Okay. Other than that comprehensive plan question, which you can...
It's, it's up with the board.
Oh.
A recommendation is to review parcels affected by changes in shoreline zoning guidelines to determine where the resource protection zone should be applied and where it might be discontinued.
Pretty wide open. Okay. Just the, just the input that I have, obviously I have control over what my wife and I own, a small piece, it's on, there's a nice bog there, it's got a lot of waterfowl in it, it's kind of a cool spot. Yeah. There's fish in there, this kind of, it's, it's a pretty good-sized area, so I have no problem with it staying.
Is it a seasonal wetland?
No, no, no. There's, there's, it's iced over now, but no, 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 there's, 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 there is running water to go, to go through there year-round.
Oh.
Beaver dam on the end on the Silver Lake side. It's quite a big body, you get down in there and it's quite a, it's quite a little chunk of, of bog and it, it does harbor quite a bit of wildlife.
So is that the flow that culled there on Silver Lake Road that went away?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, I know where it is. Chassy farm.
Depends on where the, the beavers are sometimes. There's a lot right here. Yeah. And so anyway, I just appreciate you taking this up, but I'm perfectly comfortable. It's, it's, I think it's a pretty valuable spot, the way it's being used. And would, my input would be to keep it, keep it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Please, Stuart, Stuart? I know the last time we talked about the zoning on the, with the comprehensive plan, I talked about that piece there on, next to Bayview and basically changing all of that. And I don't know why that hasn't, wasn't discussed as part of this, the hearing piece here, it was just left the same, something's going to be brought up later, you think, or? That piece on Bayview was, the way I, the way I stood here was just to be a spot zone here. I thought we had talked about, I at least talked about making that whole area out there that...
Correct. I think we were halfway into that conversation when we took a, a side note to go talk about the RP issue. And I've actually got that brought back up right here, that's what I borrowed his comprehensive plan for.
That would be the only thing I would suggest, to look at that.
That, well, I'll, I'll, with you here and with what Jeff had said with the spot zoning, something I wanted to bring up and see what everybody thinks about it is that, yes, in the event that, that we do change that now, yes, it does benefit those, those particular landowners, those people for the use of what they want to do with their land. However, looking at the town's comprehensive plan, that is a goal to change that area over anyway, like he had mentioned.
Exactly.
So given the fact that that's a goal anyway, I think that's kind of a moot point on the spot zoning end of things, where it's something that we were trying to accomplish, it just so happens.
I was thinking, sending, because after you mentioned that at that last meeting, I went in and I researched that, and you were spot on right about it. It's residential slash commercial.
I did as well.
So I, I don't see how it could be spot. I, we're not looking at it, thinking, how could this be spot?
It would be if we were doing it for the sole purposes to just, to just do that one, but looking to the future for the things that are coming down the pike, for what, what the town wants to move forward and their goals for that land and for that area, to adjust that so they can accomplish their goals, then that particular situation of these landowners, that would just be a, part of the process of what, of what's going to take place.
Had you asked the attorney about spot zoning?
Yes.
Okay, I wonder because they kind of mentioned spot zoning at the end of their letter, almost as an aside, and I think they were just responding to the fact that you had asked about it. It didn't seem to be the, the main thrust of their response, it was just they mentioned it at the very end. And if they were responding to the fact that you asked it, that was probably the only reason. So I don't think that spot zoning was nice that you asked, but...
So...
Can you bring up the picture? He wasn't here last week, so he didn't see that color picture of the...
That's C2 versus that, that lot? Can't we just restore C2 to have residential allowed using? So what's preventing this, people from doing what they want to do? I forget. Single-family dwellings is a sticking point. Residential uses are allowed.
You missed this last time.
Yeah.
Pete had, had brought this up, it's in the...
Could you bring the cursor to that? Could you bring the cursor to that, that piece of land that we're talking about, Jeff, please?
It's in the comp plan.
Right there, yeah.
And that's, directly impacts the area we're speaking of.
Yeah. Well, you can see that, that, that whole outlined area in the red.
The red line.
Yeah.
Neon green.
That's the C, C2, Jeff, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
So that's the, that's the C2 district that, that we were talking about, that comprehensive plan here, it's on page, I believe, on page 36, it talks about a new residential district.
You know, as a potential.
Specifically brings up that map.
As a potential scenario, you can imagine it becoming commercial. What's in that area now is, is a little strip mall and a McDonald's, so someone buys that, they raise a 1700s building, and put a competing Burger King where that used to be. Is that what we want for the future of that area? I'd be surprised, you know, seeing what the comp plan says. I doubt that citizens would want something like that. And certainly, if it was commercial, that could happen to it.
Basically, all that neon green area is undeveloped right now.
Yeah.
And the pink area at the bottom of the neon green, that's along Route 1, is not really developed. I mean, you, you've got the Rite Aid there, you've got the motel, and the lady that was, the house that's next to us, subject, C2, that's there, and, and you go up to 46, you've got a couple of things along there, but pink area is just a limited area, you know, developable area on Route 1.
That's the Route 1 area specifically, is what we're talking about there, but that C2 district also goes much further back.
Oh, yeah.
Where there's other areas.
Goes way out to.
Right.
Race track road.
There's other, now, that's all lumped into, into one section, into one district currently right now. I mean, is it possible, if we needed to do something different with those specific areas, if we wanted to separate Route 1 from the further northern section, to separate that C2 district into two districts instead of one? Is that possible?
I think you guys can rezone anything you want.
Yeah.
Looking at it. My, my, I guess my other point is that, when this was done in 2010, we were talking about all the commercial stuff that was going to happen out there, but that, that hasn't happened. I think we're, we're sort of looking here as a town of maybe changing our folks a little bit, maybe getting some more houses and, and folks moving in here, and let the commercial take over where it's going to take over, which, you know, it's going to be here on Main Street, maybe and down there.
He's got the comprehensive plan right there, but correct me if I'm wrong, but from what you said, it was both residential and commercial.
Correct.
Goal to try to get.
Correct.
Try to get something happening.
Exactly.
Get something there.
So what we were thinking of doing is moving that one lot from where it is to another zone, correct? To, to provide them the ability to do what they wanted to do.
That, that was our original idea, but Jeff had brought up that if we did that, then that would, that would favor them in regards to the, to the spot zoning, and what we've since found out is that this whole area, as part of the town's comprehensive plan, was going to come up in front of us at some point anyway, to open up that whole area.
So that's, I, I think we, someone mentioned that back then, that instead of just doing this one lot, why don't we just do it to the whole?
Right. And we had, we had talked about some concerns about residential areas on Route 1, if that was really what, what we had wanted, and so on and so forth, but.
Well, I gra, I think I'd rather have a house than an empty lot, because there's not a lot of commercial people.
I would like to be proven so wrong on what I'm about to say, but I don't think I'm gonna. I would love to see Route 1 just absolutely peppered with commercial development, but it's not gonna happen.
No, it don't. So, you're gonna have a lot of empty fields.
And it's had its chances for the last 20 years.
I'm in my mid-sixties, it's not gonna be in my lifetime.
Well, maybe it'll be in mine today.
Maybe, and I hope it is.
But you know, if you're the, if you're the property owner, I'd like to see it used by the property owner as, you know, not something crazy, but as they see fit. If they want to put a house, put a house. If they want to put a sandwich shop, put a sandwich shop.
Because right now, a lot, from, from the bridge out to the whole town line, it's mixed development.
It is.
Most of it, not all businesses, but there are residences and apartments along the area.
Falcon homes.
If it just happens, somebody puts a storm in the middle of the neighborhood, you know, that allows them to do that.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that's a good point.
I'm all for that.
Yeah. So I think if we were to move forward in that direction, to make that, to follow through the town's comprehensive plan, then the issue of the spot zoning for that particular piece of property, I think that would just be a moot point. I think that would just be, be part of the process of us moving forward with the, with the comprehensive plan.
You making that a motion?
Yes.
I would second that motion.
Just second. So, this is the proposed change right now, that's under review. Are you suggesting that you want to do something different for that?
Right now, we can't, we can't move forward with that, because you brought up the issue of spot zoning, right?
We've had, it's, it's entirely your decision.
But in, in whether it's right or wrong, if we, if we do it for one lot.
Right, we'll have to do it.
Then we'll have to do it for every single person that comes in the door, well, I want my lot to do this, I want my lot to do that. And, and the, the town map will look like Zillow, with all those little red and blue dots all over the place.
Which ones?
Sir.
Hi, Richard Tella. Is this going to have any impact, if you're not going to go with what's here, on delaying the rest of Appendix K?
I don't know why it would have to delay.
I don't think so. We could just.
That would be mine?
We could make a change right here, to.
I would suggest you do it after the public hearing is closed, and you're deliberating this, you know, what's been said in the public hearing, and what you want to do to move forward. But, but I think, in answer to your question, I think if you wanted to delete this proposed change from the, all the other draft changes, I don't think that's going to cause a problem. Or, if you think it's a significant enough change, you can actually do a third reading, if you need to get more public input.
Do it.
I request, if you do request a third reading, that this gets put off, and that the Mill District moves forward, is my request.
I think the Mill District's forward.
For the former Mill property.
For the appendix K.
What are you talking about?
The ID.
With this appendix K, the ID and IDO.
Yep.
I'd hate to see that be delayed, because we're still working on this.
Right.
At this point.
Well, it's part of.
It's all part of appendix K, but what this is, what this is doing is it's holding up progress down the end of the road.
Wouldn't we need another reading?
Well, that's a decision you'd have to make, but I, again, you need to do this after the public hearing is done.
Right.
So let's close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Well, I have more input for you, though, on, on, going back to resource protection. I received an email from, I want to go to the, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's a price spot, normally never comes up when we do a contract, so.
Well, you know, that's a little different.
Yeah.
A little.
Not much. There's a contract.
That's even more specific to one person.
So this is, uh, one of the 10 resource protection areas that is being proposed to be taken, taken out of RP. The land that surrounds this is owned by one person, and that person sent me an email. And he actually commented, he also sent me the email, he sent back in 2009, we're putting this in RP. He supported it at the time, and here's what he has to say now. I support, this, by the way, this is Joseph Barnett is his name. I support the strongest possible shoreline protection. I bought more land totaling almost 400 acres on the stream flowing into Williams Pond, as my efforts to help protect our lake. I fell in love with Maine's lakes, and I hope they will have the very best protections. These protections, such as wide native plant buffers, will protect wildlife, clean water, and Maine's economy. We plan to retire soon to spend a lot of time in beautiful Maine. Let me know if there's anything I can do more to protect our lakes. Thanks, Joseph Barnett. He would, his recommendation is to not change the zoning in this Shoreland area, keeping it in RP.
How would it affect him if it was changed? I mean, he's still got control of that 400 acres.
Yeah.
That's, it shouldn't affect him either way, should it?
I don't know if he owns that whole wetland.
Protected area.
Um, he might, I, I don't know if that's.
All in?
All within the 400 acres, or.
But parts in.
Well, I, I did check with the assessor on that, and, and he and I agreed that the lines shown here aren't, aren't accurate, so his, his thought was that Mr. Barnett does own all the way around this, this section here that's in RP now.
Then, so he can control every visit, basically.
Now, is that a town line on the right side of that?
No, no, it's not. It's just a.
Insert.
Yes, an insert.
Okay, because the, the AP all of a sudden stops there.
No, it doesn't.
As though it's.
So, that's just like the other issue, we're gonna go wetland by wetland, and say, okay, this one is, this one isn't. If you're the owner, you can make it as restrictive as you want. And if he ever sells it, couldn't he put that in as a, as a.
Condition?
Bean restriction or something?
No, wetlands are wetlands. There's still be wetlands.
No, but I mean.
Even if.
But if he.
A restriction for development.
If he wants it to be restrictive, then he owns it, he can be, he can protect it as much as he wants.
Agreed.
But I believe if he sells it, he can also kind of control some of the future as well.
But he's probably not going to get a good price for it.
Well, he doesn't care. I mean, he bought 400 acres, so.
If you want my land, you gotta confirm that what I want.
Well, I mean, if, yeah.
I, I don't know, I don't know if he's had that power.
Well, he does, because he owns the land.
You know, when I bought my house, the woman wrote in the deed, I couldn't hang a bird feeder on the house.
But if he sells a property, I don't believe he'd dictate to a new owner.
Two years.
Something more restrictive than what's available.
If you own my land, couldn't you make that a condition of sales, if you don't want to buy that, don't buy my land?
A covenant on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, who's gonna enforce it?
So, but I, I don't think we want to get into each individual piece of land, water in the, in the town, so it's.
DEP is, and inland fisheries and stuff is just saying, no, we're going back to the original.
I understand that.
So, why?
I think we should do them all, or none, and if he is well within his rights to protect his land as he sees fit.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's going to be, and, right. And then he can make it as restrictive.
He can make it, he can put barbed wire around it if he wanted. Minefield.
So you want something to say?
Yes, sir. I'm one of the fellows that wants my land back the way it was, not the way it is now.
Can you just identify yourself, please?
I'm Ralph Robertson, number six on the board. Ten acres been held hostage now since 2009. I'd like to see this expedited as quick as possible, bring this one to the town council this Thursday, have them approve or disapprove. Can that be done?
I don't know if it'll be that quick.
No, it's not going to be that easy. No? All right. Sawmills. Has anybody read the 375-10?
375.
Twenty pages of.
Tell us what 375-10 is.
Correct, yeah, that's 12-8 here, it goes, says the Maine Department of Environmental Protection Regulation 375.10.
Okay.
As amended.
We used the noise restriction, I believe, in that standard to.
So what's the maximum decibels?
Uh, it's a certain.
I don't think a number, a specific number was so.
I thought it was, a certain distance away, it was a.
It's at the property line.
It's the property owner that's complaining about the noise, could probably put the, go similar on their property edge and.
We must have the, do you have anything on that, Jeff? On the decimal?
Well. How many decibels?
Sixty.
I don't know what it is in the, I don't know.
You're bringing up these ordinance, this, this ruling here, and I went and read that thing twice, and I couldn't. It goes from 55 to 75.
I knew 75 was one of the numbers, but I, I, isn't it at the, the property boundary or something, that it can only be a certain?
And when do you have it tested? When the person complains about it? Does he pay for the testing? Do you pay for the testing? Does anybody, you know, I mean, these are all questions that are going to be asked, I would think, I think they'd be asked.
Would you like to have a sawmill, or would you like to prevent that?
I own a sawmill.
Okay.
And I don't have it commercial yet, and probably never will if this thing goes through.
How long's this sawmill been?
I've had it two years now. I just use it, just cut my own lumber, logs I had to cut because the state told me in 2009, they had to cut tank and inkers off, or I wouldn't be able to do anything with it, so. She got cut off.
Well, if my memory serves me, this was added to the land use, because it wasn't an approved land use, and I don't know.
I heard it down here, because somebody complained about somebody's sawmill being too loud, if they bought some property next to it.
Somebody had a sawmill, and he was using it in a way that wasn't allowed in the land use.
On a woodlot.
Somebody had a sawmill, and he was using it in a way that wasn't allowed where he had it. It wasn't a woodlot, it was a, is it a residential area in the rural district, I believe. And I was one of the ones that said, you know, it's permitted to cut, at the time, it was permitted to cut firewood, and, but it wasn't permitted to mill logs into lumber. And to me, that doesn't make sense. If you cut the tree vertically or horizontally, it shouldn't matter, so.
Exactly.
Well, so, we're trying to be helpful for people who want to have small sawmills.
Well, this is going to apply to these places that take lo, that take logs and make them into firewood and put them on a truck and truck them away, a commercial.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
This going to apply to a commercial firewood manufacturing facility.
I don't think we've talked about that yet. I don't know that that was included.
Well, I hope not.
It's not.
Hope none of this gets included, you know. I mean, I think you opened up a can of worms.
Okay.
And, just my thoughts.
Okay.
You know, because I just read that whole 375-10, and, yeah, it's not very clear.
Here's the definition of sawmill facility, this is, this is the product of the work that we did.
Mm-hmm, I read that, yeah.
Previously, in regards to that specific issue.
So it does, it is firewood and all lumber, so it's, that would include a processor as well, I would say.
Oh, okay, does.
So, a chipper may be included.
And this is talking about for a property owner on their own land. It says, it says right here, for a property owner on their own land to process logs for the property owner's own personal use. It is not considered a small sawmill facility, so that's, that's private.
I know, if I were to save a mobile sawmill, and I can move it to somebody else's property to saw up there timber or logs, I have to apply to the same noise ordinance, correct?
If, I think if you're on their property with their permission, and you're, then it's just a friend, using a friend's tools. If you're not selling it to them.
Or if he's hired, it's a commercial.
If you're hired, if they hire you to come, correct, am I correct in saying that, Jeff?
Yeah, this, this is intended to apply to a facility that's located permanently on a piece of land, not one that moves around.
Oh.
That's good.
Getting better and better.
Better and better. Mine's on a trailer, I mean, mine's on wheels, so we can move it. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I will close the public hearing for the proposed changes to Appendix K. Next is a recommendation to the town council on adoption of proposed changes to Appendix K.
Are we going to vote on including, changing that to the rural district? Or are we going to table that to another time? Because that would be included in this, would not, we, we had a motion.
About the C2.
You made a motion, I made a, I seconded, yeah.
Yeah.
Changing the C2.
Okay, so we've discussed a lot of things between then and now.
Right.
But that's kind of.
Still hanging.
By me.
Why don't we, why don't we vote on that?
Okay.
Do you want to go back and discuss each section again, as sort of, in a summary way, to see what you, if you want to keep the proposed changes as they are, or make any other, like, first one, for example, resource protection, do you want to keep
resource protection, do you wanna keep all the proposed changes as they are or make any changes?
Before we answer that, what was the motion? Was it strictly on that...
It was on the C2 district, is what we talked about.
Yeah, it was on that C2 sliver that's next to the Bayview Avenue subdivision.
Can we deal with that? Can we go through this, piece by piece, and deal with that motion when we get to it, and that, all right?
Sure, if we're gonna go through it.
How do we do it that way?
However, that sounds good.
Yeah, sure.
Just didn't wanna miss it. We can get it over with and done.
So, part one, proposed RP amendment.
Oh, good, 'cause I didn't get one, man.
Yeah, I'll need a...
Two years, it's gonna be stingy on paper. Could you bring, we didn't have map back, Jeff?
Do you have that, that RP zone map? Can we bring that up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So do we have any issues with returning them all to what they were before 2009?
I have them listed all.
I have none either.
Okay, so we wanna just move on from that, or?
So we'll... Take a vote, perhaps?
Okay, on each section?
Yeah.
So, what's your pleasure with RP?
You wanna make that a motion? That we move on and keep...
The council that proposed RP changes is drafted?
Yes.
Correct. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
The next one deals with the changes in the ID and IDO districts. Does anybody have any issues with any of that?
Not really.
No, I think a few of the, the only thing that was changed to that last meeting was the informational kiosks, I believe, right?
Public information center.
Yeah, public information center, that's the only thing that was added last round, and that was a good, good addition.
Does we have a motion?
I make a motion to make the amendment, part two.
Second, to the ID and IDO district.
Any discussion?
This doesn't take up anything to do with the church, and the, I don't believe that has anything, that doesn't, that's not included in this, that would be a separate issue.
It would change the current occupancy of that building to a conforming use.
The current occupancy, you mean the recreation?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, that's defined in our ordinance as an indoor recreational facility, so that, that would become a conforming use because it's proposed, that added as a use allowed in the ID and IDO district.
So, maybe a strange question, but if we now change that to an allowed use or a conforming use, and the church isn't quite finished yet, does it now, do we have to go back and do like an L2 review? Because it's a non-conforming use?
You've completed your review of that, the change from a fitness center to a church. You've done that review. After some input you received tonight from the mayor, you wanna talk more about this, and we can do that in the next meeting.
Does the vote on this affect that?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, that was, I think we cleared that up.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
The next group deals with accessibility standards.
Make a motion to approve the proposed changes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And then the part four deals with the home-based professions being allowed without a permit, and the small sawmill facilities. Any definition for that land use, and finally, the proposed zone change for that one lot in the C2 district.
Were there any other issues prior to the C2 district anyone wanted to discuss?
I think we should keep that lot in C2 and just change the C2 to a...
Commercial, resident, is that the correct terminology, Jeff? Commercial, residential, or residential, commercial for the C2 district?
I'm not sure I follow what you're saying.
For, the C2 district currently is commercial, correct?
Yes, the only residential use allowed is multifamily.
Correct. So, if we were to change the C2 district, like we had talked about, and trying to keep up with the town's comprehensive plan, that would change it to commercial, residential, correct?
Are you suggesting to go back to the, the original proposal was to allow one family, one and a half family, and two-family dwellings in the C2 district?
Yes.
Are you suggesting that you wanna go back to that?
Correct, yeah, because that, and what has changed with that, why, my view on that has changed specifically is because I've been made aware of the town's comprehensive plan for that district and for that area. I think that's what we've, what we've run into, why we feel that the spot zoning is no longer even a, even a thing at this particular point in time because of that, so... Anybody else have anything to say on that, or? Everybody agree?
Is that a motion? You've got something working.
Yeah.
I can see something.
Well, we're looking at...
What do you think, Jeff?
Smoke coming out of his...
Oh, yeah. Comprehensive plans are plans. They don't have any legal binding on anything.
Well, that, we're, part of our...
Opens things up to some good ideas, maybe.
Part of our charge, I guess, is to try to, to follow the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, well, I try a budget every month.
Well...
Those don't work out.
But it does, it certainly doesn't make sense to make a change to one family's lot, because then we're, we're opening ourselves up to be doing that every month.
Right.
Where this...
We're here every month.
I understand that, but we, this, this, we don't have a long line of commercial uses beating down our door here. It doesn't say you can't do it.
We have trouble giving away lots, for nothing.
So, I would say, we, what we were gonna do to that one lot, we open it up to that entire district.
Multiple use.
Correct, sure.
Right. And the correct term for that, for that zone would be for commercial, residential use, correct?
Well, it's still the C2 district, but...
Right.
Let's take a minute here to look at the actual language and the ordinance.
I just wanna make sure when we make a motion, we do it correctly, so that we have things opened up to be able to do what needs to be done with that.
But if we change that right now, that means that we have to come back for another reading, correct? Would we have to?
No. No, this is the second reading.
This is the second reading, if we change that, we would not have, if we voted on it.
Yeah, we discussed it last month, so this is the second, and this would be it if we decide. Finito. But we don't wanna hold up the...
Here's the definition for the C2 district, it's an area suitable for commercial uses, non-commercial uses, and limited residential uses. The area is located generally east of Bayview Avenue and is accessed primarily by US Route 1 and State Route 46. Portions of the district are now served by public water and sewer, which are intended to be expanded as future development requires.
I think all you have to do is take out the word limited.
Yeah, what does limited residential mean?
That would be the multifamily.
Right.
So they couldn't use it to make a retirement village or anything like that? 'Cause it's quite a large lot, that were like 23 acres or something, is it not?
Seventeen, twelve, seventeen acres, yes.
Well, let's take, let's take that lot specifically out of it, and just look at the, look at that whole district as a whole. What could we open that up to for reasonable possibilities?
I would say we do to the district, to that whole C2, what we wanted to do to that one lot. And just, and all that really means is take that word limited out of there. It's still commercial, non-commercial, and so...
Residential?
Right. Just instead of limited residential, just say residential.
You're saying alter the definition there, is what you wanna do?
Wouldn't that serve, wouldn't that serve the same purpose?
Well, that, that would be one thing to do, but the other thing would be to go to the table of land uses and change the one family, one and a half family, and two family from X to L1.
Yeah.
All right, so our motion will include to eliminate the word limited, and then to revert back to the table to change it to L1, correct?
Does anyone have a problem with that? Jeff, do you see a problem with that?
Well, no, no, there's no problem, but I think you also are gonna have to determine if this change warrants another reading.
How many, does anybody have any idea how many people we're affecting by making this change? How many people might live in that area, or?
The Bayview Avenue subdivision.
I had no problems with it.
Mrs. Johnson actually preferred to keep it in commercial, the lady who owns the property, so that is her preference.
Well, it's still...
Well, she's still with you.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. Well, if we do it this way, it would, but if we changed it to residential, it would not. So this would suit her preference.
So, I don't think we're, we're affecting a great number of people, so I don't know that we have to identify...
I would think that any effect would be only to the good, because it gives you more versatility on your land and what you may wish to do.
And that's specifically what she requested.
So, I would think that maybe we wouldn't have to have another reading.
Right.
Each of these particular parcels that are C2 right now, each, on their own, the smallest being 17 acres, what we call spaghetti lines and stuff. You can do multiple divisions along, you know, 17 acres, so, so 3,500 feet, foot deep lot. Yeah, you can go from commercial to apartments to single-family homes up to there. Not really affect. You create neighborhoods in each one of these.
I believe you could, yeah.
You know, but...
But I don't think there's many people there now that we would be affecting or adversely. So my point is, if there was 200, 300 people in there, and we were making a change that, okay, we're gonna put a Dollar General next to your house, then we would probably wanna have another meeting to let people come and voice their concern, but I don't think that's...
See, the Dollar General would be a lot.
I, I, I understand that. But I, my point is, I don't think we would need to have another reading, if you disagree.
Keep in mind also, too, that these changes are subject to two readings held by the town council. In addition to what you're doing.
Right.
That's a vote, though, isn't it, Jeff? We can, we can do way with a second reading if you want.
No, you can, you can, I think you're thinking about the public hearing. Public hearing is optional now, but you do have to go through two readings. I don't think that...
In any event, we don't wanna hold up Appendix K, we gotta put Mr. Otello to work.
I think Appendix should be put in motion, K should be put in motion since it's...
Get our money's worth out of it.
So, we have a motion that includes this revision. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yes.
I was gonna make it. Let's go, guys.
I make a motion that we...
Football game.
Go forward with, with the revisions as described.
I second.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor? That's it, right?
Good.
That's the law, man.
So Mrs. Johnson will be happy, that's good. Give me some more time, thank you.
I know, pick a packet.
Any other discussion?
I have something, it's not on the agenda for Ednem, but I've been meaning to get this through, this draft finding the fact and decision on the Hogg Mobile Home Park. I'd like to hand out to you to review, and we can talk about it in the next meeting. I've only got to take this along together for you, but...
Tim, what do you want, Jeff? How do we need to do?
Okay, this is the one we generated.
Yes.
Sorry, cut.
Anybody wanna go home?
I do.
Make a motion. Good drive.
Motion, Ednem.
All in favor?